This is the regular meeting of the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee. It is Wednesday, May 13th, 2020, 6:30 PM. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Ledger, Section 30A, 20. Let's begin, I will call to meet this meeting to order, 6:30, 2:00 PM. And let's begin with a roll call, please, Member Johnson.
Member Karen?
Here.
Vice Chair Ekstrom? Not here, Member Hollins?
I think she's here, I think she's on mute.
Yeah.
Is that you, Vice Chair Ekstrom? I guess she's still not here, okay. Got you, Member Hollins, okay, great. Secretary Johnson here, Chair Prayety?
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Mayor Weidergardner? Not here, we have a quorum.
Okay, and Member, or Mayor Weidergardner will not be joining us this evening because unfortunately, the city's fiscal year '21 annual budget meeting is currently going on. And she has, she's joining that meeting instead. Okay, so let's go right into the agenda. The draft minutes from April 14th, 2020, this was a special meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of April 14th, 2020.
That's Member Hollins, and a second?
Second.
That's Member Ekstrom. Any discussion?
I'd like to comment that I thought the minutes were excellent.
Great, thank you, Susan Farber. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom, if you're here?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes, Chair Prayety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
We have, we have a motion carries.
Okay, thank you. I did not ask at the beginning of the meeting, I just realized, is, this meeting is being recorded by GCTV? Is there anyone else on the call that is recording? Okay, just get that out of the way before public comment. Now we're moving into public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes. We ask that you just kind of state your intent to comment and include your name and your address. And is there anyone on the line that would like to comment? Please speak up now. Okay, hearing no public comment, we will move right into the committee reports. Chairperson report, I actually am going to forego a report tonight, we have quite the agenda. And I have a feeling that the superintendent has a pretty full report for us, so we can move right into the superintendent's report.
Jordana, if you're muted, we're waiting on you.
How's that?
Better.
Okay, all right. There's a lot of materials in the packet, and I want to remind anyone, if you're watching or listening from home, all of our materials and all of our packets are always online. So if you go to GPSK12... Oh, somebody, are you okay?
That, that was just my, that was just my tablet falling, I'm fine.
See, the hazards of remote work.
This is my, this is my practically Amish setup for video conferencing.
All right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just noting for the public that materials are always available on our website. So if anyone is listening and wants to follow along, they can do that by going to GPSK12.org and clicking on School Committee on the right-hand side. And all of our materials and packets are always there, with the exception of executive session. So I'll begin my report, just, I'd like to thank the committee for the work that they're undertaking and for all of you trying to do this remotely and juggling your own families and demands. I think we've had some very productive work, and I've seen in many subcommittee or individual meetings with folks that it's also very challenging. And I just want to appreciate that many of you are giving of yourselves in this time that your own family demands and other challenges are significant. So thank you for your commitment to the students and staff of Greenfield and the families, and for moving forward in this unprecedented way at this unprecedented time. In, by way of report, I would like to draw your attention to our enrollment event, which is this week, it's ongoing, and it concludes on Friday. It's from 1:00 to 4:00 every day. And what we are doing is essentially a curbside, contactless enrollment for families. They stay in their car, or if you don't have a vehicle, we can make accommodations for you. But we meet you right in the parking lot. And we are trying to do everything possible to answer people's questions and proceed with planning for next year at the same time as following health guidelines. So that's just one example. Next, I would like to remind people that we are holding the 10th Annual Film Fest. It will be held virtually, it will not be the same this year, it will be a little different. We're accepting submissions through Friday, and the films have to be brief, less than five minutes. And usually this is a really wonderful opportunity. So moving it online presents a good way for students to be able to continue showcasing their talents as we celebrate the 10th Annual, even with some changes. So my thanks to the Film Fest crew that's making that possible. ...with the Greenfield Education Association. And we're implementing the newest guidance from the commissioner, so I expect that will be coming out soon. And you will hear, I am joined by my colleague at home. Who's, uh, going to... Very good, hopefully. She thinks I should say, "Can you hear me?" I say, "Can hear me," and I can hear you. Yeah. So we've, the social media feed is always just as a reminder of all the goings-on. And one of the items of note is graduation. Graduation will be held May 30th at the fairgrounds. I'm so pleased that this will be able to give students a respectful and dignified graduation. And we're also, oh, sorry, guys. We're also really excited that we have been in communication with the House and Senate representatives and have been in communication about the challenges that schools are facing with this digital learning environment, and of course, the challenges around school funding and the uncertainty in the upcoming budget cycle. So I just want to share that with you, and we'll address most of the other items as we move throughout this evening's agenda. There is also information about a grant that the Greenfield Public Schools received with funding to replace water fixtures. We're very pleased that we have received $15,000 for replacing five water fixtures in the schools. And we also sent out information announcing that Dean's Beans donated $5,000 to the Greenfield Public Schools in acknowledgement of the food service distribution work. And they've donated to a number of Western Massachusetts districts. And I really appreciate their community support for the food service distribution and recognizing its importance. So I will end there unless there are questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Harper from the committee?
I have a question.
Sure, Member Hollins, go ahead.
In the, thinking about the virtual planning, did the caseload of teachers change? Whatever it is in contract, can we not talk about that?
Are you talking about, for an individual teacher, the number of students that they are working with? Did it change? It did not?
Yeah. And is the agreement, is the agreement, we've already voted in agreement, right?
Correct.
And is that for this year, or does it carry into next year too? Or does it, we have to modify it for next year?
It, it addresses the period of school closure, anticipating that we are not fully able to predict when that period of closure will end.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Okay, hearing none, we will go into other reports. Any subcommittees have reports?
Yeah, budget.
Wonderful, Member Ekstrom, please.
So we have met, I think, twice since our last full committee meeting, and have gone over the FY '21 budget. And we've been talking with superintendent about kind of alterations that are going to need to be made, as we've, we discussed with Ways and Means, and I suspect will happen this evening again at the full committee, or city council meeting. We are working to, we're working to agree with or have our budget be the same as what the mayor is proposing. Additionally, we're going to be working to try and go more than that, because I think there's a consensus that money is going to be very tight for everyone. And so we're taking a larger look at the budget for '21. The budget for '20, essentially, we are going to be spending the funds that we had expected to. There isn't a savings that's going to be happening with this, which is strange to say, but there it is. And I know that the superintendent is going to be meeting with senior staff, who are the equivalent, not equivalent, they're principals and people like that, to talk about what strategically they feel would be accurate or, or to realign our budget to be closer to the mayor's, if not less than. We have another meeting pending where we're going to discuss the suggestions that are being made by the superintendent and the principals, and working from there. I think that's it. If I left anything out, Amy, you're, you're there too.
Sounds good, thank you. Any questions for Member Ekstrom, the chair of the Budget Subcommittee?
I have one.
Please, go ahead, Member, Member Hollins.
I believe at our last meeting, and it may have been in the minutes we just approved, I don't recall, we talked about the out-of-district tuition. And I don't recall it was clear we were going to, we, there was a decision made that we were going to pay them all, every single one, whether it was a public school or not, if the students weren't there, or how we were going to decide that. And I was, I think that topic and the topic of the preschool tuition was referred to the Budget Subcommittee, so I was wondering if we were going to take that up. And I'm asking because the May and June tuitions, some of them are in this current warrant.
And you mean for, you're referencing for out-of-district tuition, not AEL tuition, yes?
I mentioned both, but in terms of the May and June payments in the warrant, that's like so-and-so is going to the, this private school, public school.
So I think that's, I'm going to let Jordana answer that mostly, but I think it's complicated in that some of the schools are, were required to be open for special needs students, so they are indeed attending some of those. And I, but I can't say that that's a blanket for every, for every school. So Superintendent, you want to take over that one?
Sure, I received an email with those questions late this afternoon. So a few hours ago, I shared those with our business manager, he's begun reviewing those. We can get you answers. You have correctly described, Member Ekstrom, that we have been advised to continue making payments where schools are operating and so forth. But in this specific instance relative to your question, I'd rather let our business manager look into it and get back to you about your specific question.
Okay, I was just wondering if we hadn't decided on certain schools for May and June, if we should be paying those tuitions, that was why I generated the question, thank you.
So it sounds like Steve is going to come back to us with that answer, that seems reasonable. Academy of Early Learning, we did talk about it at, not our most recent Budget Subcommittee, but the, the meeting prior. And what we had talked about is that we would charge essentially 50% of the remaining tuition for the year, so if, let's just do easy numbers, if it costs $50 each month, we were asking them to pay 25 for the remainder of the year, because they are getting online services.
Is that a Budget Subcommittee recommendation to the full committee?
It can be a recommendation, but I suspect that we are going forward with that.
There was a discussion and a recommendation. Due to the time-sensitive nature of the billing, there was a need to make communication to parents and to move forward with that. There was a significant concern about families unenrolling their students and losing the ability to predict enrollment for the following year if there wasn't clear action on it. So there was a letter sent out to that effect with very good response from families, based on the discussion that was had, both in the Public School Committee meeting last month, in which it was referred to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee at the request of the full committee, and then again in the Subcommittee meeting where the specific details were reviewed and decided.
Chairman, I, I think since our policy, we have a policy on payment, and since subcommittees are advisory, that we should affirm that decision at our meeting tonight.
Given that that is not on the agenda, I would just like to express that it is not on the agenda, and there are staff that would have wanted to be present to speak to it if they had known it would come up.
We did have, we had a, we had a robust, robust discussion about this. And Member Wall, and Member Prayety, Chair Prayety, maybe you want to speak to this as well? It really was a time-sensitive issue. We're providing services, and I understand, Member Hollins, your concerns.
No, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying, I don't, my point is, and I'll let it go, I don't think Advisory Committees to the School Committee can make decisions for the School Committee, and I just think we should be on record affirming it since it's changed. That's all, I'm not disagreeing.
Wouldn't it be part of the budget discussion? As far as agenda items go?
Member Wall has, has a good point, it does fit in under the budget discussion. However, you know, regarding the comment that it has changed, everything's changed. We can't vote on everything. This is a process that, in terms of collecting tuition and how to proceed specifically with AEL, that was a problem from the beginning because of the manual effort required. And the, it's more, much more operational than it is a school committee issue. And I, I just don't think that we need to vote on it, but let's wait till the budget discussion, and we can discuss further.
That's fine with me.
Any other questions about budget?
Just on that note, I've sent, I sent the letter in an email just now to the full committee, just for your reference, just in regards to the billing. Essentially, parents were charged one month's tuition for the time of April, May, and June. So they received that discount, and they received a tuition credit from March 16th to April 13th, prior to the Remote Learning Plan being in place. And so that compromise has been a very good way to predict enrollment, offer families a credit, because of course we're looking for, we're not able to provide it in the same way, but teachers are working and continuing to provide services. So that is sent out to each member.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any other questions for Member Ekstrom and the Budget Subcommittee? Okay, so the next Subcommittee report, or Committee report, would be School Committee Representatives to Other Bodies, which are not currently operating, so we can move right into new business at this point. I am actually going to ask briefly that Member Ekstrom, like Superintendent Harper, I have colleagues here with me tonight that I need to check on, meaning my children. And Member Ekstrom, if you would take us into the new business, and item A, I will be back momentarily.
Okay, grab my agenda quick. So first thing that we're, my speaker's on, yeah?
Yes.
First thing that we are going to discuss is the GHS Q4 grading and redistribution of Y1 weighting. If that is the first document looking in the second packet, that says SC Materials 2 underscore 0. And Jordana, I'm going to let you take the lead on this one, because you are far more intricately knowledgeable. And I believe we have Karen Patton out on the phone also to discuss if we need, or on the line, or whatever it is we're doing now.
And I'm, I'm already back.
And Amy has joined us.
I'm already back, that was quick, yes. I have dream children, just in case anyone was wondering.
Bless you. I don't have them.
So Principal Patton, are you on the line with us tonight?
Hi, Amy, yes, I am.
Awesome, okay. So I will freely admit, I read the chart and the description of the weighting multiple times, and I have no idea what it all is. So it would be helpful for either you or the superintendent to walk us through the work that you did to create this, and what it does in terms of the changes in the school year.
Principal Patton, do you want to begin?
Sure, and I'll try to be as simple as possible to keep you all on the same page. So with regards to the Commissioner's guidance, and along with my leadership team, which consists of seven GHS staff members, including a special educator, we took the Commissioner's guidance and tried to figure out how we could redistribute Y1 weighting throughout the year. So a normal school year, you'll see in the first chart, quarter one counts for 20% of the year, quarter two, 20%, and so on and so forth down the chart. But with quarter three only having seven weeks, and quarter four now being totally remote learning, we were thinking of issues of equity and how students are being affected by the remote learning and want to redistribute that weight so that there is more weight given to quarters one, two, and midterm exams, so that their year-long grade reflects truly the students that they were before we left, and that they're trying to remain to be during the Remote Learning Plan. As you know, at the high school level, it's a little more complicated because they earn credits for graduation per class. So we have to at least redistribute some of that weight so that these year-long classes can be acquired towards their graduation requirements. Any questions on year-long before I go on to semester two or the quarter four grades themselves?
You can keep going.
Okay, I was wondering if I was on mute. And just, you know, with regards to the year-long, we also eliminated the final exam piece, which is normally 10% of their year-long grades. So that weighting had to be redistributed, as we didn't feel it was fair. And the Commissioner's guidance also suggested that final exams be eliminated due to the remote learning. For some of our classes, however, though, such as elective, they started on January 28th, which was the beginning of semester two for the year. And students only had seven weeks with their teacher in those elective classes. And then we were put out of school due to the coronavirus. So they've missed 13 weeks of a semester two class, and as well, they wouldn't have a final exam. So our leadership team, under the Commissioner's guidance, decided that we would go along with the pass fail for semester two classes so that they can still earn the credits during this remote learning time, but that we would eliminate the effect that those classes would have on the GPA. As students were only in front of live teachers for seven weeks, we did not want that to be a detriment to students in weighting their GPAs moving forward. So they will receive the credit toward graduation, they'll be given a pass fail for semester two elective classes, and then we'll eliminate the effect it'll have on their overall GPA moving forward. Any questions on semester two?
Nope.
Okay, great. And then quarter four, which is where we are right now in terms of the Remote Learning Plan, that started on April 3rd. All of our teachers, under the Remote Learning Plan, are grading these assignments, credit, no credit, as defined in our Remote Learning Plan. But in the end, ultimately, they need to get a grade for quarter four to be weighted into the year-long weighting for that course toward graduation requirements and obtaining the credit. So what they are going to do is, they will get a pass fail, but they'll get a numeric grade that is attached to that pass fail. So that numeric grade can be weighted into the year-long class according to the chart above. So hopefully that makes sense to everyone. We really, and I have Kurt Kinsmith, who's a math teacher, and on the leadership team on the line as well, but we looked at every level of an academic learner. So we plugged in the redistribution of weights with an A-plus student, you know, a B student, a C-D student, and someone who is failing, and really put a lot of thought into the redistribution. And we really, in changing the weighting, we've maintained the standings and have really, I think, supported the level of learner that was before the closure, continuing through the Remote Learning Plan. And in essence, if students do really well remotely, it only improves their scores, not hurts them detrimentally.
It is amazing how if we have you here to explain this for us, it all of a sudden makes sense.
See why you need teachers?
That's right.
Wow.
Thank you very much for that.
Oh, you're welcome, and, you know, we're looking for your support. Obviously, we, we want to finalize this with central office on the Power School backend, and let families know what our plan is so that students who have been concerned about how this all is going to affect them will really have something definitive to look at and rely on.
Sure, thank you, I appreciate all of that context. From the School Committee, I would like to see a motion to accept the fourth quarter redistribution of Y1 weighting as presented?
So moved.
Member Wall got it first.
Member Wall with the motion, is that Member Johnson?
In the procurement, because it is a city building, and they've been handling the procurement that was approved by the city council. At this time, they do not expect to have the heating system installed for the fall. So we discussed this at the Budget and Finance Subcommittee meeting. There is not an expectation that that building will be open on time based on some delays with getting that heating system installed. In the budget realm, in a way, that is good news, because we don't then have to open a program and staff that program at that site. However, you all do raise some good points about space. Space is going to be an issue for us, and spacing out within the existing buildings that we have is just not going to be possible, you know, without staggering and some of the plans that we're working on. We do have a re-entry team forming, and I don't want to imply that we're simply waiting for guidance. We are planning and proactively, but we do have to wait for guidance to authorize us to implement those plans. So going through those various planning exercises, but obviously you can't... So going through those various planning exercises, but obviously, you can't, you know, just take it upon yourself to say, okay, today, today's the day we're reopening, so we're going to implement our plan. So it's just a balance of working within that. And not to put too fine a point on it, but I couldn't agree more that teachers and educators need to be prioritized in all this, but with some of the cuts that we're talking about, it is going to affect everybody. And the administration components, we always look to cut in administration first if we can. I will say that much of this work is extremely heavy on administration in the sense that the pieces that are all new, as you heard earlier tonight about the high school GPA, I suspect that most people think of going to remote learning by way of the instruction and the parts that you see. I don't think people necessarily think about the administrative effort required to recalculate those GPA scores to actually orchestrate the backend. What we're doing is rebuilding the backbone of education, and it's not just how you deliver it. That is an important part, but it's not all of what happens in schools. And so the work we're doing right now is extraordinarily time-consuming and intensive, and because I do expect that it will continue into the fall with some degree of concern about COVID, even if it's just monitoring it, which is the best-case scenario. We, you know, we simply can't... And I'm not saying you suggested this, Member Wall, but, you know, just as an extreme example, we can't eliminate administration because we still have to make all these changes, oversee all these sort of health conditions, and make sure that we're keeping students and families safe.
I'll just say, as a School Committee member who's served to help negotiate with the unions about the New Distance Learning Plan, I've gotten a little bit of a glimpse of what you're talking about, Jordana, of what is involved in completely remaking a school system. And part of what we're talking about is the situation in the fall will be different, and it may need to be reinvented again. And I certainly have seen and really appreciated the effort that you and other administrators are... Have made to mitigate the negative impacts on our students of this devastating disease and the precautions we need to take to protect ourselves.
Can I speak as well?
Please, Member Exstrom.
So speaking as someone who is an administrator, I... I think there's a lot of... There are a lot of things that happen administratively to keep businesses and schools running that people don't think about. So while... I always get nervous when I see companies letting people who administer the services that are needed, because what that means is, okay, no one's doing that now, and everyone has to take that into their own hand, and everyone will do things differently, and it will become less organized, and it will... Things will fall between the cracks. And so I don't... I don't... And I'm not saying, Jean, that you're suggesting this is... That that is what we should do. I am always hesitant when there's a knee-jerk reaction of, okay, let's get rid of some administrators because they're not providing direct services. They are providing direct services, you just don't see them. That's all. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I didn't mean that all administrators should go away. That was not my...
No, it didn't.
We know you didn't mean that.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I think everyone has done an excellent job with quite a heavy load to bear. And please don't think I'm being critical at all. I'm just trying to think outside the box on what we do going forward.
I think that's a good idea.
Absolutely. And that was the tenor of your comments in my head, too. It sounded like you were just trying to be innovative. Yeah. I have a... Go ahead, Member Hollins. Go ahead.
Well, I had a few questions about the budget. So when we get to that, is it okay to ask them?
Please ask your questions.
The Superintendent said something about $479,000, and I didn't hear whether that was new money or something. She repeats that was additional funding, I think.
That was not me.
Superintendent Harper, I think you mentioned $479,000. That is relief money from... Is it the state, the federal government? Is it CARES Act funding?
This is... That's exactly what it is. It's the CARES Act Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. It's the ESAR allocations. They will be administered as a grant, so districts have to apply. And you have, you know, there's some different ways that districts can apply these funds, either retroactively to expenses we already had, moving forward into the next fiscal year. There's some different ways, depending on what district's most pressing needs were with their expenses related to COVID enclosures and so forth. So there is some relief money there, and that is good news. And we just don't know, you know, if there's any more coming or if this is the extent of it, and so we have to, you know, stretch it as far as we can.
So are you saying that if... If the amount that we needed to reduce to align to the mayor's budget was 1.7 million, and now there's 500,000 in for relief, and if we applied that to next year's budget, that now we're looking at 1.2 million? Is that what I understand?
That is... That's one possible way that we could proceed, yes.
Okay, thank you. May I ask another question?
Please.
I know... I did look through quickly the budget reports, and I'm not able to print them out, but I did have a question about ELL services and budgeting for that. Not a complaint. It looks like we had... And the print's very small, so I might not even write. It looked like for this year, we had budgeted 129,000, and it looked like we were... We had spent to date 181,000, if I read that correctly. Could I understand what we're... I remember when we only had, you know, under 10,000 or something. So it's a big program. I was just wondering what's going on with students who speak other languages than English, what those types of expenses are that's making that increase.
Are you interested in a broken-down report to bring back to a future committee meeting or to distribute to Budget and Finance Subcommittee? We could do any of those things, that'd be fine.
I'd like to understand it, but since you bring up the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, I'd like to talk about that, because if you're saying now that a committee that doesn't have authority to make decisions for the School Committee is making decisions, and they're not coming back... I'm not addressing the School Committee, to the Superintendent. And it doesn't come back to be affirmed, or it doesn't come back for a vote, and the whole School Committee doesn't know the meetings are happening, and other people... The whole School Committee can't weigh in on decisions that are being made. And I'm just uncomfortable that... I understand the world's upside down, but the basic rules of our governing body is that the School Committee as a whole makes... Is the only body that can make policy decisions for the School Committee, and the Subcommittee can't be doing that. So I would...
Member Hollins, I'm going to cut you off there. We're not talking about the subcommittees and what they do. You can ask questions about the budget for either fiscal year, but we're not talking about that right now. That is off-topic, as far as I'm concerned.
I was answering the Superintendent's question.
Chair Poiroti, I was timing. We have rules of order for our committee that say that members speak for three-minute turns. They can have up to two-minute turns on an agenda item. So the timer just went off for Member Hollins at the moment that you said that.
I will then file my concern officially if I can't voice it to my committee. I was responding to the Superintendent's question.
Time is up, I'm sorry.
Okay. Let's talk... I have... I actually, myself, have maybe a couple of questions. Do we have any updated guidance around paying KESMUSKIS for bus transportation? I know we've been waiting on, hopefully, something from the Commissioner's office, and I don't think we've had an update since then.
I'll jump in.
Thanks, Steve.
Yes. We've received some word that there is legislation either about to be passed or is being passed fairly soon that will allow us to pay for services that didn't occur. However, once that passes, we're clear to go ahead and make a payment, but then the question is, what do you want to pay? Do you want to pay the full amount, or do you want to pay some partial amount because, frankly, they're not providing service? So that would be the next question then.
Okay, so let me get this straight. At the state level, there's legislation moving through the State House that will likely clarify what we can or cannot do?
Yes.
Okay. Let's wait till we get the legislation. We all know how Massachusetts Legislature works. They're not swift, and they don't always...
They're not speedy, no.
No, and they don't always do what they say they're going to do. So let's wait and get that. And then it sounds like as a School Committee, we would decide as a whole what we would... What we would want to do with KESMUSKIS.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And then the only other question I have is that it does sound like the Health and Safety Committee should meet sometime soon to start discussing policy around safety during the reopening, the transition reopening period.
Sounds like you're right. You're right.
Great. So Member Karen, I take it you'll be all over that?
Got it.
Awesome, thank you.
Yes, no budget task.
It is not. You're absolutely right. It just came up in the discussion, and it had come up actually at the Budget Subcommittee meeting as well, that they probably should have a meeting and will look for some structure to help Member Karen and the other members of that committee to have some conversations that will guide policy. Any other questions or comments around budget?
Just kudos to the Budget Committee and the administration who are working on this. Appreciate what you're doing.
Thanks, Glenn.
I just got a note from a principal who was watching the City Council meeting, who said that the School Department budget approved... Was approved unanimously through the City Council, and that budget is the budget as recommended in the mayor's budget.
Thank you. Okay, so we are into our... Moving into our last new business item, which is the Management Solutions, TMS for short, interim service. And Jordana, do you want to introduce... And I know Andy Paquette from TMS is on the line with us, as well as, I think, a couple other school districts, right, Andy?
Sure, I'm happy to start with this. So actually, I might offer, Steve, I don't know if there's anything you want to share at the outset, if there's anything you want to speak to. Otherwise, I'll introduce this topic.
Sure, I'll say a couple of words. I'm moving on to the Andover Schools as their Assistant Superintendent, Chief Operating Officer. It's a much larger school district. It's in the eastern part of the state, and my wife is currently working at Westford, so we're kind of slowly moving out that way. It's a great opportunity, and I appreciate my time here in Greenfield, and I wish you guys the best of luck, because I know it's going to be tough.
Steve, when you say much larger district, you want to throw the number out, because it's a larger district?
Yeah, it's about almost 8,000 students.
Wow. Steve, I just want to extend my congratulations to you. It sounds like a wonderful opportunity, and certainly to be closer together as a family has got to be something you're looking forward to, and I really appreciate your service to the district, and I wish you the best of luck.
Well, thanks. I appreciate it. Amy?
So... And I'll join in saying that we certainly wish Steve the very best in his new district. And with his planning for a departure, I have recommended to the committee tonight that we enter into a contract with the Management Solutions. Andy Paquette at TMS has been... Worked with the Greenfield Public Schools in the past when we were between business administrators and works well with Steve and could support the immediate tasks as well as the transition that would allow the committee some time to explore next options. If you want to run a search for the school business manager, it takes some time to do that. So my recommendation is that while the committee considers what to do for next steps, that we simultaneously ask TMS to come on to support in the immediate tasks. As we've just discussed, there's a lot of complexity around the FY '21 budget, and I want to ensure that that need is met first and foremost.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve and Jordana. So like we've done with our other agenda items, let's start with a motion. I would take a motion to authorize TMS to provide school business manager services for the Greenfield Public Schools for one month effective immediately.
So moved.
Does Member Exstrom, do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Member Karen? That was fun. Okay, move into discussion, questions, comments?
I think this is a great opportunity for us, and frankly, that they work with multiple school districts is really helpful in my mind because they have knowledge of, hey, how else is everyone... How is everyone else handling this strange period in time? And also, I imagine laws are going to be changing pretty dramatically, and if you have a team behind you, the odds are better that you will actually know those laws are changing. Isn't sad we didn't before, Steve, but I'm just saying. And I think it's... I think it's a great opportunity. I actually suspect that we will be entrusted in having them longer than a month, if I can say that out loud, just based on how the economy is right now.
That was...
That's all. Thank you.
That was my question. And Steve, thank you for putting up with me and all of my learning questions and being so patient, but I wonder if a month is going to be long enough?
It probably is not going to be long enough. I don't know if Superintendent Harper, if you want to explain how these contracts sometimes work or typically work. But in general, they are hired on a month-to-month basis.
Yeah, and I believe Andy, being on the phone, he may want to speak about it. My recommendation of a month has nothing to do with what the committee may want to do long-term, but more just that I think it's important that we begin the sort of overlapping coverage as Steve plans his transition, and that we have that continuity in place regardless of what the committee wants to do beyond that. So that would help us get the ball rolling using best business practices. You know, we've gotten a written quote for services, and so we can... Andy, if you want to add to that, please feel free.
I'd like to comment.
I have a question.
Oh, Andy, I think you might be on mute if you are... If you can hear us and you're talking. It does look like he's still with us.
Entertainingly, I said, hey, Andy, I think you might be muted while I was muted.
I also know he was on the line with... Literally on the line with another school district at the same time. So it could be that he is trying to juggle two things right now, and it's not coordinating. Member Hollins?
Sorry.
Member Hollins, did you say you had a comment?
Yes, this is the third time since I've been on this school.
Yes, this is the third time since I've been on the school committee that we're using the services of this company. And before I mention it, Steve, lots of luck to you. And the second time we used their services, the school committee said, you know, we, we really need to know there's one person who's gonna work with us. What I recall is, we were guaranteed there would be one person. And then I think what happened was the different people started rotating in, and it didn't work well. And I think when Steve started, there was a lot of. So my comment is, I think it would be important to ask, can we have one person who's doing our work, not rotating people, and have that, because it was important to the district. Make sure, because what would happen is one person would say, let's do it this way, another one would say, no, that way.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Member Johnson.
Have the, have the negotiations for that already taken place, or is this pending negotiations?
My understanding is that we've asked if they have the capacity to take us on right now. They said they, they did. We asked when they could start, and they said they would be ready to start immediately. And there has not been a specific discussion about actually signing on the dotted line, so to speak. I don't know, Superintendent Harper, if you have more information?
Yeah, Andy, who I think I heard him actually being able to, maybe he got unmuted or whatever. I think he's now back with us. Andy, are you here?
I do see his line, but it's still on mute.
Okay, so he did provide us a written quote in the service. One month is at the rate of $9,500 for a one-month service. So it's within the thresholds of under $10,000. So the committee is, you know, free using best business practices to use that quote to enter into services for a month of services. And if wanted to negotiate it further, that would be subject to, you know, ongoing discussion and negotiation. But it's more like a contractual services and less like a salary negotiation with a full-time employee. TMS's business structure is a little different. Just to address the question about a point person, what TMS offers and sort of where it landed is that there's a primary person and a secondary or backup person assigned to each district. They do have a sort of a team, team approach. It's helpful when there's meetings and so forth, and you need coverage. And the person that the, that sort of more complex issues is generally addressed to is the, the primary person. Whereas the secondary person might be more pulling a report for you, or, you know, sort of providing additional coverage and support. So just to address that communication piece, certainly more than two people. I think at one point, there may have been three individuals working with the district, and that, that was too many. TMS found that working with a primary and a secondary worked well in most districts. And it's been my experience that as long as there's one primary person in the district, it works well for us.
Any more questions? Andy, any chance we can get you on? Glenn, you have something you'd like to say?
I was just wondering if Chair Prayety is still with us.
Yes, she had an emergency. You're muted.
I, I am still here. I had to run upstairs for a crier.
Okay.
I'm back.
Only one?
Only.
My sense is that we're ready to vote, although we would love to talk to Adam if he becomes available.
Oh, Andy, yeah.
Andy, yep.
Let's, let's move to a vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Abstain.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Prayety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Hello.
Oh, there is.
Andy!
Oh, goodness. Star six, you have to unmute yourself with star six.
Oh dear. We can hear you now.
Okay, my apologies.
Andy, since you're on the line. This is Amy, the, the chair. I actually have a question for you, and there's poss, there's possibility that other members may have a question for you.
Sure.
Can you just talk to us briefly about your firm's experience with remote work in terms of the, the services that you provide?
Sure. Well, we have been providing these services, just quickly for those that aren't familiar, since 2006. So what it is, is that, I mean, there is a remote component to it, you know, but most of our contracts, under normal circumstances, would require, and we're fine with, you know, X number of days on-site necessarily, you know, whatever is put in the scope of services, and those days are mutually agreed upon, whatever makes sense for administration and superintendent. But honestly, in light of the fact with the advent of technology, as much as this pandemic has thrown everything into an interesting place for all of us to be, it has kind of been for us a proof of concept, if you will, as to how remote services such as this could work because of use of, you know, web-based technology. We have remote access to, you know, all our district's other financial accounting systems. And, you know, so, and when we were in Greenfield before, we had that ability. And so we could log in and, and do all this stuff remotely. And then, you know, we, we use Zoom and would, you know, be willing to, whether it's Zoom or a Google platform used, to be able to conduct meetings with staff and administration as needed through, through those types of hosting platforms. So it's all, I guess I'd say, what we're all experiencing now, which is, might be new to some, has been kind of our, our concept all along.
Great.
And I did hear just, one of the things, also, I was able to hear the questions. The thing, the question regarding the month, that was driven by procurement regulations. And so the, the way it's normally been done, and that we did this in the past in Greenfield as well, was, you know, you, some, request a quote for services. And then at the same time, then, you would then explore whether you do a formal bid for an X, you know, estimated period of time, or a solicitation of a quote to see, you know, maybe a shorter period of time regarding that. So that's why, in a sense, the, the month was done so that you could get someone in there quickly. I also did hear the concerns about multiple people. We acknowledge that, that that didn't work. You know, we are trying to do the, you know, we all like to say in our, in our company that, you know, everybody in the business office, and for that matter, school administration, has an extra-long business card. And they, they do, you know, just about everything under the sun. So we, we thought that it was, you know, to help divide and conquer the work at the time. And, you know, understanding that that didn't necessarily work, we have now recreated internally, internal redundancy, where there is one key point person. And then we make that clear with the staff, that, you know, you ask the questions of that key person that is assigned. And then the secondary person, as Jordana was mentioning, is there to, in a sense, support that person and also be able to run reports. But any sort of decision-making, discussions, deliberations, what have you, whatever is involved, and you would have expect of the business manager would be that one point person.
Thank you. Other questions for Andy from the committee?
I have a question.
Sure, was that Member Hollins?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Andy. If I recall, I don't recall if when you were here before, the district was switching to MUNIS.
Yes.
I think when Steve came on, in the middle of this. But when I get a MUNIS report, even if it's complicated, it still isn't, I read completely sort of like MUNIS centers. Is this, is your company familiar with MUNIS? Thank you.
Oh, yes. And, and Member Hollins, I would say also that the, the town was converting to, the conversion started our first time that we were there when Ms. Gilman was the business manager and leaving. And I think it was Jordana's first year. So we have been in and out of this long MUNIS conversion that Greenfield has been going through. We have used MUNIS in several other districts. I'm actually in the process now of converting one of our other clients to, from an accounting system to MUNIS as well. So we are all in, TMS, very familiar with MUNIS and understanding the, you know, the challenges that are with, A, the newness of a system, and also if there are reports generated or that, that need to be generated, we're familiar with, you know, running it, whether, you know, we need to run reports from MUNIS in a, in a different matter, you know, way. We've, you know, can very easily reach out to them just because of our relationship that we have with Tyler Technology, based on the products that we use of theirs and other places. MUNIS and Budget Center are all both owned by Tyler. So we are very familiar with MUNIS and familiar with the process that Greenfield has been going through. As I said, three iterations of our visit to go.
All right, thank you.
And I would also just want to say something, too, is even though we have, as we've talked about, the, the point person and an individual as a backup support person. Within the TMS world, we have MCPPO-certified individuals. We have, you know, facility support, you know, for potential, you know, as far as, you know, advice for various things. We have technology, all sorts of areas where it's kind of, I'll say, you know, we'll say one-stop shopping of administrative needs, or even just a resource of Q and A, similar to what Jordana mentioned. I also heard her mention about, you know, you know, we, our concept has been taking the best practices that we've seen from, I used to be an auditor for the state auditing school districts, and we've taken the best practices that we've seen in addition to best practices from MASBO, the National, the American Association of School Business Officials. I'm a certified government finance manager, so the Association of Government Accountants, we've taken the best practices from there, and, you know, kind of rolled it into the, the TMS concept of school finance, management, and administration.
Andy, I don't know if you got to hear the part of the, the meeting where we, we voted to approve using your services for the month.
I did hear that, yes.
Great. Is Chair Prayety still with us?
I'm here, just on mute again. I, I was just saying, thank you, Andy, for being with us and for being patient with us as we work through our agenda. I appreciate your time and welcome aboard. Thank you.
My pleasure. Look forward to working with all of you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we are finished with the new business items, and we do have a need this evening for an executive session. What we will do is we will leave this session as a school committee, and we will go to a different remote session. And we will briefly come back to the public meeting in order to take any votes in public that we've taken in executive session. I need to read why we're going into executive session, the, the three exemptions from the open meeting law, Mass General Law 38, Section 21, two, subsections two, three, and six. Two is to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Exemption three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares. And reason six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. I do need a vote to go to, into executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved. This is Member Johnson.
And second, I think that was Member Extrem, and can we just move right to a vote?
Yes. Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Prayety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
The motion to go into executive session carries.
Wonderful. So we will eventually return to this line, if anyone does want to be patient and stay on. We will return briefly just to take any votes. We will now move into executive session. 5:00 PM, May 13th, we are back in public session of the Greenfield Public Schools' regular school committee meeting for May, and we have a vote to take. I would like a motion to appoint Member Katie Karen from the Negotiations and Contracts Subcommittee to work with the superintendent to craft a contract for the Director of People's Services.
One more.
Who was that? Jean had the second. Who was the first?
It was Extrem.
Thank you, Member Extrem, and then Member Wall with the second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You clarified that the draft contract would come back to the school committee, correct?
Correct. Any other discussion? Okay, let's move to a vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Abstain.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Prayety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
The motion carries. Five votes and one abstention.
Wonderful. And now I will take a motion to adjourn the public session.
So move.
From Member Wall and a second.
Second.
Member Extrem with the second by a hair. And let's move right to a vote, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
On mute, maybe?
Okay, Member Hollins.
Yes, I was, as a matter of fact.
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Prayety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. You are adjourned.
Are adjourned. 8:57 PM. You all did wonderful work tonight. Thank you very much. We'll see you all soon.